Good evening, and welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, School Board Meeting for Tuesday, October 24th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting into order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening, welcome. Nanny, if you would, roll call, please.
Mueller?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Lewis? Severson? Here. Samurai?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement: Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Second?
That, Lorian?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, motion carries. Announcements: October 30th, Monday at 6:30, there'll be a bond referendum forum at the high school. November 7th, Tuesday, special election on the bond referendum. November 10th, which is a Friday, there'll be no schools, the district in-service day. November 14th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting. November 21st at 5:00 PM, there'll be a school board listening session. Also on the 21st at 5:30, there'll be a school board work session. November 23rd and 24th, there'll be no school for Thanksgiving, the district offices will be closed. And then on November 28th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting. Next up is correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, is any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Thank you. Next up would be communication to the board. Citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Anyone here that wants to speak? Next up would be the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report. I get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Lorian?
Second.
Holla. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next up would be acknowledgement of contributions. I'll ask for a motion in a second, I'll read it and then open it for discussion. If I get a motion to move it forward?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Lorian. Acknowledgement of contributions resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B .02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the Columbia, by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $1,401.47. Under the detailed background, a donation of $105 was made to North Park Elementary by St. Timothy's for hats and mittens for student needs. Under value and kind, donation of school supplies to North Park Elementary by St. Timothy for Student Needs, estimated value $696.47. A donation of school supplies to North Park Elementary by Troy and Madonna Wagner for Student Needs, estimated value $15. A donation of school supplies to Highland Elementary by Falde and American Legion Post 555 for Student Needs, estimated value of $35. A donation of a clarinet to Valley View Elementary by Janet and Gerard Berkoffer for Student Needs, estimated value $450. And a donation of hats and mittens to Valley View Elementary by St. Phillips Church for Student Needs, estimated value of $80. Our total fiscal 2017-2018 monetary contributions to date is $5,356.54. Any discussion or comments?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
As always.
Our generosity, yeah, it's appreciated.
Okay.
Very much.
All right, if there's no further discussion, it has to be a resolution, so roll call, please.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you for the contributions. Next up would be discussion reports, information items. Reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. And I'll go first tonight, in the interest of efficiency and the fact that there's a football playoff game tonight, I will defer my report of activities, only to mention that throughout the course of, since our last meeting, I've had multiple conversations with constituents, which I'm sure everyone has, but, so that's my report. Laura?
My report will be very similar, so I will also defer anything.
Okay. Lorian?
I'll also defer my report, and again, to mention that I spent a lot of time talking with our, our community members.
Okay. Nanny?
Same, and just want to put out there that I think we're all more than willing to have conversations with people with questions.
Absolutely. Ditto.
All right.
And people can keep on contacting me, asking questions about it.
Yeah, encourage it, yeah.
I encourage it, yep.
Thank you. Okay. Next up would be the superintendent's report. Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair and members, I'll be deferring my report tonight due to the time constraints.
Not the football game?
The football game.
Okay.
All right. Called me out.
Next up would be introduction of a foreign exchange student. It's, well, let somebody else help me with your last name, Pasco.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, it's my honor this evening to introduce Pascal Boner, who is our Rotary Youth Exchange student attending our high school. And I just wanted to say briefly that the Fridley Columbia Heights Rotary Club, of which I'm a member, are, we've been involved for three years with Rotary Youth Exchange. We've hosted two years ago, sponsored a student last year who went to India, and this year we're very pleased to have Pascal here with us from Germany. And I just want to give a shout-out to Zach Huang, who is also a Rotarian, and he is Pascal's club counselor as well, so a lot of support from our Rotary Club for Pascal. And with that, I'll turn it over to Pascal.
So, my name is Pascal Böner, and I want to give you a quick introduction of myself. I'm 16-years-old, I'm living in Germany on a small organic farm. I'm living there with my two siblings, my older brother, Kilian, he's 17, and my younger sister, Caroline, she is 14, and my parents, and I have two dogs. And I'm playing soccer back there, and here, I play soccer too, I was Rosati, and today I was, it was announced that I was the MVP of our team. And I want to say something about the school. I was really surprised, because in Germany, school is really strict. And here, everybody's so friendly, so open and nice, and wants to talk to you and wants to know you. And that was a really big surprise for me. And the school is not that much bigger than my school in Germany, I think like 200 more students, and I have to do so much, so much more work here as in Germany. And my favorite class is youth history. I'm living here with host families from Rotary, and I arrived in August, on the 12th, I think, yeah. And I'm here for the whole school year, and at the end of the school year, I do, I was sponsored from Rotary to do an east coast trip. And I was here, I'm here to live the American life out of the movies and want to prove myself and get used to the life. And I want to say thank you to you, that you hosted me as a student here, and I have a small gift from my Rotary Club in Germany for you.
Come on, thank you. He does that, or?
I know I have a couple, congratulations on the MVP, I'll start with that, that's awesome.
Thank you.
But question, one of my questions to you is, where you live in Germany, what is the climate, the weather like there? Do they have the changes like we do here?
I live in the Midwest of Germany, and it's pretty similar than it is now the weather, and we don't have such a hard winter as anybody. Everybody told me here, we have like, I think, 20 degrees Fahrenheit is the coldest that we get. And the summer is okay, but not as hot as here.
Okay, so my question, again, the follow-up question is, do you have a warm jacket, hat, and mittens?
Yes, I bought them on this weekend.
Welcome to Minnesota, welcome to Columbia Heights. I think what you've already discovered about, this is my personal opinion, but you discovered about our students and staff and the friendliness, that I think you'll find will extend out into our community. It's a very welcoming place to be, so we're happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else has anything they want to grill them on with questions, leave it up?
Are you a sophomore, then?
No, I am a junior.
You're a junior, okay.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're very happy to have you here, and thank you very much for coming and presenting to the board. We really enjoy it when students come, come in, because this is the reason we do what we do.
Yeah, and we know it's a little nerve-wracking to be up here, talking in front of people you don't know, so we appreciate it that much more.
How many presentations have you had to do so far?
This is my second.
Second one, oh, you did great.
You did great.
Thank you.
Very well.
And now he's going to head to the football game also.
All right. If we do this right, we'll see you there in a little bit.
Certainly.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up would be the summer seminar students presentation. All right, more students.
Yes.
Not that we don't like our staff and administrators, but we love having students come up and do it.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, very pleased to be here this evening with, accompanied by some great folks here that I'm going to introduce to you to talk about our summer seminar program that we had this summer. With me, we have teacher Dan Ronchak, who teaches at the high school math in Avid and early college boost, and helps with all the theater tech stuff as well, all kinds of things. We also have freshman Nick Bogan and freshman Ugin Dorji here to talk with you about summer seminar. So of course, part of our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this summer opportunity is, falls in line with our mission, and really focuses on the core values of community, excellence, and collaboration. So Summer Seminar is a collaborative partner between our school district and the St. Anthony, our neighboring district, St. Anthony New Brighton. The two districts came together three years ago as part of our achievement and integration funding and programming, the incentive portion, and the, they collided and blended in a great way, and therefore we call ourselves the Highskies, so Highlander plus the Huskies. So the kids all have little Highskies backpacks and t-shirts, and the teachers, and wear them proudly. So what, what we do during summer seminar is, we have a teacher from St. Anthony and a teacher from Columbia Heights in the same room, with a mix of kids as well. So it's really about integrating the two different districts around the themes of writing and then also a math class, we'll talk about those today. Why do we have summer seminar? The transition to ninth grade is a big one, so we want to make sure that we're providing programming for students transitioning into ninth grade. Kids, the students who sign up for summer seminar are expected to take an advanced course in high school, we want to make sure that they're extra prepared. Part of our collaboration with our neighboring district for achievement and integration, and really, a few years ago, the Department of Education came forward to us and really suggested to both the superintendents in, in both districts that this would be a really good collaboration and use of those funds. And so the two superintendents got together and put, put a team together of folks to really plan and make some decisions. So this year, we've expanded to have two writing classes and one math class. So traditionally, we've had one math class, we've, we've tried out different configurations over the years. This year, we were able to expand, four weeks, so students also, in addition to learning in the classroom, Ugin's, this was Ugin's classroom, they attended either weekly field trips or had experiential learning of sorts. We had a guest speaker come in as well this year. So the writing, the writing kids really focused on identity and community in their writing pieces. Susan Armington, who's a local artist and author, came and did a workshop with the students called "The Things We Carry," and the students read an excerpt from the book, "The Things We Carry." All of the students went to visit the Bedote site under, below the Fort Snelling, and all of the kids also did a college visit. In addition, the math class focused on computer programming, robotics, and the Avid Bridge, Summer Bridge curriculum. So, what were those little robot, round robots called?
Spheroes.
Sphero robots, they programmed them and designed video games. So Nick might talk a little bit about the video game that he designed. And then luckily, we had the Pixar exhibit in town this summer, and so since they were working on those kinds of design pieces, they visited that as well. So enough from me, there's the spheroes in their hands, you can see in the photo. So I want to turn it over to Mr. Ronchak to say a few words, and then the, the students as well, just to share some of your experiences.
Yeah, so it was really exciting to be able to work with these students and reinforce these, so sure, we were doing spheroes and robots, but it was reinforcing particular topics that we've seen students struggling with, so we could really reinforce those. It was also beneficial to me to work with somebody from another district, to hear other ways and challenges and ways that we overcame things, so while they learned stuff, I actually was able to learn a lot from my co-teacher in the classroom. I'll let Nick talk.
Okay, so as you heard, I did the math seminar, and the idea of it was to kind of, it was to go over it and get an idea of how things work, so we learned, like I said, we, like they said, we worked with the spheroes, which was involved a little bit of programming, but it was simplified with just blocks of what happened. And we did a few challenges, like we navigated them to different courses to complete them, and we weren't, and we worked with partners as well, so we got to do a little bit of that. And at the beginning of the seminar, we did a little bit of team building, we set into survivor groups, which were groups of about three people, and throughout the seminar, we did many challenges where we, we used, we worked with our group in order to solve these challenges, and over, and overall, just learned teamwork. And we learned coding, and, yeah, we made video games from base coding, there was a packet that we filled out, every day, we learned a little bit more. And at the end, we each gave a presentation, which would explain one piece of the coding, and I ended up doing mine a second time, and as they said, we did the college ship as well, we went to the University of Minnesota, and I absolutely fell in love with it, so I'm looking forward to college as well.
And this is Ugin, who participated in the writing seminar.
Transitioning from, oh, I'm sorry, from eighth grade to ninth grade, it's really where I matured, and I learned that's when a student really evolves themselves before high school. And I felt that me, being a student that's like, I'm a girl, is very complicated, I don't know who to trust, I don't know who to tell to, I learned that a great way to express it is writing. And I've been a pre-AP student for about four years now, and I've always known that English and writing was my worst subject, I, my first language was in English, but I found it, it was really helpful to come here and just have like all the students who are like me, who don't necessarily know everything about English, but can come together and still like perform well to our best, and that's all what Columbia Heights is about, so I found it really happy.
Thank you. Superintendent Kelly and I had the opportunity to attend the final showcase, which was also in this room. The writing students and the math students came together and read their final pieces and demonstrated their video games, and it was really powerful, and we're looking forward to continuing this program, and I'm, I'm very pleased that we were able to expand it, to have more kids participate, and we'll see if we can maybe have additional math classes this year as well, we'll see. So if there are any questions?
I just have one comment, if I may, and that is, a special thanks to the teachers and to the students. The final presentations were just jaw-dropping, as far as I was concerned. This room was just alive with knowledge, and it was all student voice and student-centered, and it was, just made me happy for days and days and days afterwards, not that making me happy is a thing that you have to do, but the, the other, the other thing that was so special about it is that the chemistry between the two districts was magical, and I understand that part of this seminar will be presented down at Minnesota School Boards Association in January, so you'll see it on display there as well. So thanks to each and every one of you here, and to those that are not here as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Go Gophers.
Go Gophers. Start saying them. Thank you, guys, for coming on and speaking tonight, both were very articulate, and it's, you just, as you talked about the participation, your eyes lit up as you described what you were doing, so it looks like it was a, a good program for you to be a part of, and I appreciate you sharing that with us tonight, thank you. All right, thanks. Next up is our summer programming update.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, we're talking a lot about our summer programming this evening, so just turned a little bit crisp this evening, we can hearken back to the warm weather. I'm happy to be here this evening with Director Stunkel and Dean of Students Camille Erickson, who was our summer school principal this summer. So of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and we provided a variety of summer programs this summer in order to do that. Today, we'll be focusing on the core value of excellence. So really, our goal for summer school, there's multiple goals for summer school, focusing on reading and math interventions, students have the opportunity to earn high school credits, English language support, services that are mandated by students' individual educational plans, and then also many opportunities for enrichment. A little bit of data that shows why summer is, summer programming is so very important is that there's something called the summer learning loss, where we have three months off, and if kids aren't actively engaged, we do see in the fall that dip in, in academic success. This is particularly stark for low-income students, according to research. And another research study cites that teachers report having to reteach many things for the first month of school, that kids may have lost, academic skills that kids may have lost over the summer months. So with that, we're going to talk about the community education programs, elementary school, middle school, and high school programs for summer 2017. Director Stunkel.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, with community education, you might remember that at the start of the summer, I presented that community education was collaborating with the Activities and Athletic Department. And so this year, we are, we presented, we offered many activity camps for students. You can see on the screen, the participation, we continue to have a robust driver's ed program during the summer to make sure that our teenagers are safe on the road, many different sports and athletic camps that were in really great collaboration with the Activities Department, and took us through most of the summer. And then, with Blooming Heights, that's a very active program, as you can imagine it being garden-based and it being summer here in Minnesota. So we had 100 students with Adventure Club and Mini Adventures participating in Blooming Heights programming. We had community visits, including, we had three classes from our Adult Basic Ed Program come up the hill, and that was a really amazing experience, that's the first time that we've partnered with ABE and Blooming Heights, and will continue to do that annually. We also continue to have Recreation Department programs coming up weekly, which we've done since Blooming Heights was established, and then we incorporated Community Nights. We had a Blooming Heights internship program with 15 students participating, and then we had 445 students with summer school, making use of partnerships with Blooming Heights and Agriculture Specialist Maya Lemon. And then in terms of our childcare programs, Mini Adventures had 40 participants this summer, and Adventure Club had 86, and that was a robust program throughout the summer. Thank you.
And for our elementary programs, Dean Erickson?
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. It's my great pleasure to talk about our summer school programming. For our elementary program, we ran a program K through 5 at Highland Elementary School, and the population that we targeted were students that were far below grade level, and that was assessed by the CBM, the cognitively-based measure on reading fluency. And what the data indicates is that students who attended summer school here in Columbia Heights are retaining literacy skills, such as letter naming, sounds, and reading fluency. An overview for the elementary program, it was July 10th through August 4th, at the elementary site, we had approximately 250 students every day. We focused on literacy, math, science, physical education, and music, so lots of enrichment opportunities for our students. Something that was new this year was composting in the cafeteria, and I really would like to do a shout-out to Amber Young, who really truly piloted that program, and owned it and did a wonderful job of really going around the cafeteria and teaching our kids about composting and what that means. Just did a really wonderful job engaging the kids in that as an educational aspect of the lunchroom. Speaking of the lunchroom, we did serve breakfast and lunch, our cafeteria staff were very engaged with our kids, making sure that they were eating healthy lunches and having a good experience at school.
So one of the ways that we wanted to measure what was happening in summer school was, I'm using, as Dean Erickson mentioned, the cognitively-based measure, so our reading fluency assessment. This is an assessment that's given district-wide, K5, three times a year, and so we took a look at the pre-assessment that was given in spring, and then the post-assessment in September. This assessment is used for progress monitoring throughout the school year, so really thinking about gaining in reading and avoiding that summer learning loss. So the data's interesting because, and I'm, I'm planning on doing something a little bit different next year, because there's a target for proficiency in the spring, and then a very different target for proficiency in the fall, so it's not comparing apples to apples. So instead, we looked at summer learning loss, and were we, were we retaining or not the reading levels compared, but students who went to summer school and students who did not. So with that mouthful, looking at the data between spring and then fall, students who did attend summer school had less, less of the learning loss, so the shorter one is positive than, as compared to students who did not attend our summer programming. So it's really significant based on the fact that the students who we targeted for summer programming were kids who really needed, who had high needs in terms of their academic
One of the things that I was really excited to see as I was walking around and spending time in classrooms, was seeing all the connections that we had to Avid. As you see in the photo up here, this was a time when I popped into a classroom and I saw students taking three-column notes, which is a big part of Avid Elementary. We also had students that were using daily planners, they were doing calendars, all sorts of avid instructional strategies were going on, which we know really builds rigor in the classroom. We also really took advantage of the outside, as Director Stunkel already mentioned, you can see an image here of our kids spending time at, at Blooming Heights. We also had a fantastic specialist team, Vicky Denzer is shown here, and she would take her kids out. Amber Young, again, spent a lot of time outside, did a lot of really hands-on activities, getting kids engaged in the habitat in our community. Another thing that I thought was really interesting that we were able to do is that we had a strong connection with the, the middle school program. We have a center-based program, Chloe Bluth ran that at the high school, and we had some time in our specialist schedule at Highland, and we brought them over and engaged those students in our specialist schedule here at Valley View Elementary. So that was a really strong, positive thing that we were able to include all of our students in the programming. One final thing, this is one of my favorite shots from summer school, because it shows our kids being active out in the community in the beautiful Highland Elementary playground. We made sure that, that our kids really took advantage of those outdoor spaces and were engaged and active in summer school.
Moving to the middle school, again, similar target group for students, and we changed it up for the, for the assessments and how to measure the success, we worked with the teachers and created a pre- and post-assessment for both the reading, the five core areas of reading, and multiple areas of math. What we found with the data is that students did show growth in both reading and math, so let's take a look at reading. Based on the pre- and post-assessment for our middle school students in reading, there was nearly a 20% gain on the assessment, and so they really worked hard. Now for math, there was a 152% increase, but based on the pre- and post-test, and so I automatically- And so I automatically asked Coordinator Faebek, who's here in the audience, and the teacher to, like, "Let's take another look at that assessment, and what was that? Was it, maybe it was just fact fluency, I know they were working really hard, we saw them inside and outside and doing all kinds of things." And took another look, and it was really algebra concepts and some serious math. There was just a lot of passion and a lot of, you were in the classroom a lot, a lot of group work and high, high engagement in students. So there's the data for that one. Moving to math, or to high school, this is really about credit recovery, students who need credits for graduation. So we're going to look at credit completion. And again, this is run by District 916, our ALC, so I was able to work with that staff and on setting it up, and the high school staff really enrolling students. So let's take a look. Students can earn up to .5 credits, so half of a credit for one course, and they're typically enrolled in two courses. So initially, 96 students enrolled for the 30-day program. They didn't all stick with it, though, as you can see by the number of half semester credits that were earned. So overall, 21.6 credits were earned. 21 of the students in that 30-day period completed an entire math class, were able to recover that credit. Two of the students completed an entire science class, another two health, and another one student completed a social studies class. So students who stuck with it and completed their work were having success. However, there were many students who didn't complete the full course. So many of them were receiving partial credit, which is why that's a funny number there. The, working with this ALC staff, really pointed to transportation. A few years ago, we did, we were able to offer tokens, bus tokens, for kids to come. And so we've been really looking at that as another option for students, that, or busing, or what can we do to provide more access to our students? All of the students who were not attending summer school did receive multiple phone calls from staff. Those students have also been followed up with this fall to be, they're offered night school at our ALC, or in some cases, if needed, daytime ALC as well. So there was a large effort to reach out to the students, and we're proud of the ones who were able to complete credits and some partial credits. But really, we need to focus on attendance with the students next year. So for the summer of 2018, as you all know, we were awarded the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant, which is our encore program. And we'll be able to blend that funding with our regular targeted services funding to hopefully create some more exciting summer offerings for our students. And planning is currently underway.
Any questions?
I have a question. Thank you. Lots of great information. Really interested in seeing the results and the assessments from the students who are attending summer school particularly. Have there been, as you're looking at your 2018 planning, are we looking at increasing enrollment or, you know, having more opportunities for students? I know you had said that we're opening up to students who are far below grade level. And we obviously have a lot of students who are not meeting grade level expectations. So it's great to, it's great to see that growth. Are there conversations about extending those opportunities to other students?
One of the exciting pieces of being able to blend the encore funding with the targeted services funding, so for targeted services, it's very specific and kind of prescriptive how the funding can be used. And then with encore blending, we will be able to expand to a larger population of students.
Thank you.
At the high school level, was it, what grades, was that seniors or was that a mixture?
It was a mixture of the high school grades.
Any else have questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up would be the Summer Academy recap.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We're here again to talk more about summer programming. Now, I'm very, very excited to introduce to you our new Summer Academy Director, and Disa Faebek, who is our, you've met her before, our District Assessment Coordinator, and she also coordinates our gifted programming. So of course, Columbia Heights creates worlds of opportunities for every learner, and Summer Academy certainly does that. This presentation really focuses, hits on many, many of our core values, including community, excellence, collaboration, innovation. And so really, what is Summer Academy? It's a two-and-a-half-week summer program for students who are identified as gifted from across the metro area. They come together here on campus for the almost three weeks of variety of learning. So I'm going to turn it over, and I'd like to introduce you to Mike Schroeder, who is our new Summer Academy Director.
Thank you. Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the school board, thank you so much for having me. As Zina said, this is my first year, and I really took this in as a learning experience. Really, it was my first year a part of the program in any, any manner. And so what I really focused on, getting to know as much as I could about the ins and outs and leading through that. And it wouldn't have been possible, we wouldn't have had the success that we had this year without the great support system we had from within our board, from our Board Chair Trina Hira, through our entire board, our Summer Academy support staff, and especially from the people here at Columbia Heights. We don't have the success we have without that collaboration. And the people here, from Zina, from Disa, from Tom Foley, from Brian Hennekenz, that made it happen. And the flexibility and the ability to collaborate and work together, if they needed something, if we needed something, we were, we were truly working as one. And without that, we don't have the success that we have here this year at Summer Academy. So I couldn't have been happier with the host site and just appreciate all the support and really looking forward to working with everyone here at Columbia Heights again in 2018. A couple of highlights that I had from this year was really the amount of engagement and hands-on learning that you see in each and every classroom. And it's truly incredible. You know, I walked in here having, having watched all the videos online, had read up on everything, but until you truly get into it, you really don't see how incredible the work is that our teachers do with these students. And I don't think there's any better example than, we have two of our classes, one of them's Video Games for Good, and right next door, you have Physics, Physics, Physics. And you couldn't get two different examples of student engagement. If you walked into our Video Games for Good, the students, you could hear a pin drop. They're all working on creating video games for Feed My Starving Children. And you walk in there, every single kid is completely engaged in what they're doing. And you just couldn't hear a word. And you could go right next door to Physics, 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 and they're working on balloon cars and marbles, and there's people running all over the place, and they're just completely engaged. And it's just incredible that, you know, you have two different groups so completely engaged in such a different way, and all doing hands-on learning. And so, you know, I was, at that moment, so very proud, you know, and it just really felt like home at that point. And so that was, that was incredible. And the other, the other one of my favorite moments of Summer Academy, you know, had to do with Scott Larson, who was a Columbia Heights teacher. He, he's got a personality. And, and to walk in, I knew I was invited into his class first day, so I walk in and the kids are a little scared, you know, they're, they're a little nervous to present, and, you know, I'm new, they're new, and you could see a little timinist. But by the time the kids came to that last day, it was all gone. They were presenting, they were up there standing and improv-ing in front of an entire room full of people, and we're talking, you know, at least 100 people in there, and they're not skipping a beat. And to see those, that growth and stopping in throughout, it was truly incredible. So again, like I said, I was, I was very proud to be a part of a Summer Academy, and it's really an incredible learning. A quick overview, as I know there's a football game to get to. We started on June 13th, went through the 29th, so 13 days, going from eight to noon with two extended days. A lot of the times on those extended days, they went on field trips or they had presenters come in. We had our open house, which typically draws a couple thousand people, and it did. People, if you say 5:30, 6 o'clock, they're here a half hour early, ready to go. And it's really an opportunity for the parents and the families to really see the amazing things that our students are doing. We had 1,308 students attend Summer Academy this year, and we had an additional 76 serve as a teaching assistants, which is essentially a volunteer. The students typically have gone through the program, and they want to come back and help. And they're very much appreciated, but they are, 76 additional kids that come in through the districts. And we provided 64 classes this year in grades one through 11. We had two new courses. I'm a Tech Ninja, which was, which is really an incredible class, and one that I know that we look to, are going to look to expand, really working with really cutting-edge technology from, you know, Flipgrid to Makey Makey, and something that I think that we can see that's where our future's heading and what the kids want to be in. We had, I know we had 92 kids sign up for that class that provided only 22 slots. So we know where our market is, and we know where we need to move towards. And our other course was Predators of the Sea and Sky, which was, again, filled up quickly, and the students loved it. So our tuition this year was $390. It remained the same for the last eight years. And so we were proud to be able to keep it at a pretty affordable price for the summer programming, so.
Yeah, and that's where all takeovers. So Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, nice to see you again. For our students at Champlin Park, Eric Champlin Park, Columbia Heights, excuse me, we are able to offer a tuition at $290, which is really, really affordable, more affordable for students, and we appreciate that. And that is because we are the host site. And so a little bit about our student representation and how many students we invited. So again, these are typically students who are identified as gifted and talented. And for first grade, all districts are able to reach out to teachers and say, "Please identify two to three students per class in each of the first-grade classes." And so we had 31 students invited for grade one, and then 45 in grades two through five. And again, scholarship information was available to all students. And then you can see the attendance rates, you know, six students in first grade, three in second, five in third, and then four in both fourth and fifth grade. And so some reasonings about this, so we invited quite a few, we casted a pretty wide net, so what, you know, why didn't we get as many as we had hoped? Although this is pretty on par with past years, we're actually up this year than we were in previous years. So some barriers, I'm reaching out to families and talking to them, was really that idea of it's a half-day, so that can be a struggle with daycare, especially, you know, first, second, third, fourth graders, even fifth, that's hard to keep them home by themselves. Transportation is always an issue. And then some families said, you know, the registration comes out March 1st, I believe.
It opens March 1st.
Opens March 1st, thank you. And so it's hard to plan, some families aren't sure if they're going to be traveling or what the situation will be in the summer. And so those were some barriers that I was able to gather. And some supports that we were able to offer our families, of course, was the scholarship. So in addition to that $100 tuition reduction, we did say, "We have some scholarship funds, and that's part of the board," that we're able to offer, and all families that requested it and had need were able to be, provided that. And then communication, of course, we did send home information in both Spanish and English right away. And the teachers were amazing facilitators, reaching out to families, checking in with the students that were invited, personally handing them letters to give home, reaching out to the families afterwards, so they were really supportive.
Do you have any questions?
I have a question. I know, and Zina and I talked a little bit about this, is there any opportunities or conversations about expanding the program? Again, I know you looked at the barriers. I'll speak from personal experience of registering my daughter the day after March 1st, and everything was closed, no waiting list, you know. So I know that there were several Columbia Heights families in particular that were not able to enroll, were put on waitlist, and then was basically told that you weren't, if you were on the waitlist, you weren't getting in classes. So 1,300, what a great number. So are there opportunities for, for more students to be able to participate?
That is...
This is a board, a board topic that comes up at every Summer Academy Board meeting. What can we do about registration? There's been talks about, should we open up a second campus on the other side of town? So the Summer Academy Board is definitely having those discussions, long discussions about how can we ensure that enrollment, the way, for everyone, the way that you enroll is, it's an online process. And it opens and it closes fast. And so Disa definitely did facilitate some of the, our families who wanted to do paper or, you know, giving the information on how to enroll, but it, the demand is really high. We've also talked about at the board level, you know, one of the districts that participates is Anoka Henepin. They're huge compared to Columbia Heights. So really looking at the proportionalities of the districts, can we reserve slots? Lots of different ideas. So I do attend most of the board meetings, and we'll definitely push that topic again. Did you want to add anything?
And just add, I do apologize, that it did close so soon. It was something that we couldn't foresee the prior year. It closed in three days, and that was the fastest it ever closed. And the fact was, is that it opened at midnight, and by 9:00 PM, it was closed, and that's even with the website crashing. The demand is there, and we see the demand and we hear the concerns, and that is something that we are really, actually our focus is on. We want, we want it to be a very equitable process for all of our families that we serve in the districts. And so that is something that we, we keep in the forefront of all our decision-making.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just, I just have a question from, I've seen a couple of these presentations over the years. It seems like every year, we have like an extra 100 students, 50 to 100 students every year, then. I know that we're increasing the capacity, but again, I would love to see more of our students participate, and it seems like a fairly small number considering that there may not be as many transportation issues here as there would be in, like in Anoka Henepin or something, where they'd be coming from a long distance. And I've talked to people who've said, "Oh yeah, I've had my, my kids went to Summer Academy over here, and they live, you know, all the way out, you know, on the other side of the cities." So if there's anything at all we can do to be able to expand some of these programs and hopefully be able to get more opportunities for the kids, that'd be awesome. Because it is a great, it is, it is wonderful to see the bustling when you come over here in the morning. Of course, when you're dropping kids off in the morning and you're having to dodge the school buses, it's a little bit different, but it is great to see the schools so active during those, those times. You do a great job.
Thank you.
We've definitely talked with Superintendent Kelly, has, has lots of ideas about how can we provide similar experiences to other students within our district? So does our summer school program have to look like summer school, or could it look more like Summer Academy? You know, couldn't we, when we're blending the funding with the 21st Century learning, the possibilities really open up. So we're trying to put on our creative hats and do something. The three of us walked around and toured Summer Academy, and as Mike said, we were blown away. And I think all of our kids, you know, could have that opportunity, that expanded opportunity, Summer Academy or not.
And a lot of our teachers actually participate in some of the teaching programs as well, so is there anything proprietary about the, about the program that's offered? If we could offer it as a summer course?
I would say Summer Academy itself is proprietary, yes, but offering a different style of summer programming to Columbia Heights students, we could certainly do.
Okay. I meant the coursework, being able to duplicate the course, so.
Yep, it's owned by Summer Academy. Yep, it's definitely owned by Summer Academy.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions?
It's definitely an exciting program. I don't have to change my driving pattern to work for three weeks.
Sorry.
I apologize.
No, no, no. If that's why I have to, if that's why I have to drive a different way, I'm okay with that.
I will add, though, that the new configuration of Highland Elementary with the bus lane is, it's just improved greatly, the traffic, pedestrian traffic and the, and the car traffic. So it's been great.
Thank Michelle for that. She came up with a great idea, so I have to, I cannot take...
Mike, thanks. Congratulations on your first year. Look forward to next summer.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up would be our building vision card for Highland Elementary.
Can you do it on the drive?
Sure.
Or do you want me to? I'm probably doing more of the talking. Should switch. Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the school board, pleased to have Principal Michelle DeWitt here. Michelle DeWitt here to discuss the Highland Strategic Plan. Of course, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this presentation really touches on all of the components of the strategic plan that align with our core values. With that...
All right, good evening Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, I will try to be as brief as possible for you, starting with just a look at Highland's enrollment, which has maintained and has stayed very strong over the past several years, as well as our demographics. Our ethnic diversity is nearly identical to the last couple of years, staying kind of a third, a third, a third, or a fourth, a fourth, a fourth, if you add some categories together. Our free and reduced lunch, this is kind of one of my pet projects, but I think I was the first building to hit 76% free and reduced lunch this year. It's really important for our families to encourage getting their forms returned as quickly as possible. Our goal is really October 1st, there's a kind of a cushion of October 15th, but we really want to make sure that our families don't owe money, and so we try to really communicate and get multiple forms if we need to, and my secretary does a fabulous job of working with the families to try to get these turned in. But again, we're, I know we're above that now, that was our percentage on October 1st, but we, we're probably closer to 80 at this point. Our demographics with special education and EL have both increased. Highland has the largest special education population across the district right now, at 17%. Our EL population right now is at 30%, which is comparable a little bit up from last year. Our MCA data is also very comparable to the last few years, if you look at our math and reading staying at about the same amount within a percent or two. We did take a pretty significant increase in science this year, and I'll 100% attribute that to Amber Young, who has really turned around our science program. So she's, I think in year three in this position, really knows the curriculum inside and out, coming from a fourth grade classroom teacher into that program, but also really has a passion for getting the students actively engaged in lessons, really teaches to the standards, knows what the students need to know for the, for the MCA test, and works hard to ensure that students are well-prepared. So just a quick look at the strategic roadmap, which I'm sure you have seen multiple times. As we go through the chart, I'm not going to go through every area, I'm gonna highlight some important areas. I think a priority across the elementary schools now moving into the secondary buildings is our PLC work, and Highland, when you look at A2, is at a score of four, which 70 to 80%, 89% of our teachers doing PLC work, and it says monthly at a minimum. The teachers really, the classroom teachers at Highland are doing this work weekly, so if you're a K through five classroom teacher, you're meeting with your grade-level team at least once a week to work on PLCs, to really dig deep into the data. We do move students around a fair amount for reading and math, and the teachers know where they're at unit by unit. So there could be a student with one teacher for one unit, and then when we pre-test, they may move into a different teacher's class. So really, making the learning most appropriate for the students, and it's very flexible. In the next set of data, I want to just talk briefly about our walkthroughs. The walkthroughs, we continue to do, I would say, a pretty high percentage of walkthroughs between the principals, dean of students, as well as our peer reviewers. So we are getting into the classrooms to really know what's going on, get to know the students, really monitoring the instruction of the teachers, so I would, I would say very close to vision at that, at that point. I want to talk about A8 in particular, presence of multi-tiered interventions for students. Obviously, our, our base management program is really responsive classroom in the elementary schools. We do responsive classroom in every single classroom, including pre-K. We have consistent expectations, we do school rules all the way down to classroom expectations in every room, but we all, that is really our base program. We do have a tiered intervention system for behavior, all the way to check and connect, which is the most hands-on, this, this is a morning and afternoon check-in with either the dean of students or social worker. For our kind of high-flying students, our students that visit Time to Think a Lot, this is a great opportunity for, we do ongoing progress monitoring, we do move students in and out of check and connect, so if they're, we graduate them. So if they're doing really well, they're having a high percentage of daily point-earning, we will eventually graduate them, but we keep in touch and make sure they're still maintaining that level. But ideally, we're trying to target the students who would have the most behavior referrals. We talk about, you know, 5% of the students having 95% of the, of the behavior referrals at any particular building, so it's working on trying to give the children the skills to be active, engaged learners in the classroom, and not outside of the classroom so often. The next slide really hits the point of participation. Obviously, participation is going to go up significantly with Encore, we just have so many more students participating. We're full, we have a waiting list at Highland, so that, we have the class, all of the classes that we could have offered, and every class is full with a wait. And so, we'll be strategically looking at that first semester, too, of students who may have, maybe were able to get into two Encore classes in this first semester, we'll make sure other students were able to get into the classes they wanted to, if not to. Parent engagement is always strong at Highland. We were, again, over 80% of our families attended conferences. When you factor in phone calls, which we do give as an option, or a written conference instead of a face-to-face, we're very, very close to 100%. So the teachers work hard at making sure that they're able to connect with families in some manner, whether or not it's, it's sending things home if they ask for a written report, but lots of, lots of phone conferences, but face-to-face still solidly over 80%. We had an exceptional turnout at our information night as well, the, the building was packed. We had, we served dinner, which is nice for our families. We had a book fair that we earned an incredible amount of money, and just the amount of visitors was absolutely incredible. So they have lots of opportunities to see curriculum, learn more about responsive classroom, do family hopes and dreams, we do family pictures, and then we will hang those up in the building. The next, this is a good look at our data at Highland. So a couple data points that I'm not going to spend a lot of time with, because MAP, we're testing so few students at this point. We test all of our second graders, and then the LEAP, the gifted and talented students, but we did see pretty good math grow, MAP growth for our students. The, the B4 at the bottom may look deceiving, although we're, we're doing CBM testing three times a year, which is the district standard. We will do progress monitoring CBMs with students who need it, so that the tier-three students, but we're just not doing that with a lot of students, so the percentage is lower there. For MCAs, we're close to 50% in reading and math, but we're still not above the 60% standard. We had our strongest showing in science this year, as you saw on a different chart. Also, when you look at the gap between the standards, so our, our white students compared to other students, in math, there was a 31% difference, and reading, 24% difference. And I think the last one is two areas both in behavior. We had a difference between student groups of out-of-class referrals, close to that 20% mark, out-of-school suspensions, we're at Vision there, we're actually less than 100 students. We average about 45 suspensions a school year, and again, it's probably about three or four students who have the majority of the suspensions. Just a kind of a quick overview of the committees at Highland. We have leader, obviously leadership, our leadership is site-based, equity and parent involvement, CCC, or our culture, climate, and community, responsive classroom, and then we also do have grade-level meetings twice a week, which in, two to three times, but minimally twice a week, which includes PLC time. And then we also have a very strong student assistance team to work with our classroom teachers on creating interventions for students, and child study is pre-assessment for special education. I'm just gonna go through a couple of initiatives. One is consistently, every year, we look at opportunities to make sure that our parents and community feel involved with our school, and so we, between the PTO and the staff, look at new opportunities. So every year, we, we tend to do our same standard parent nights, but then we like to add in some things that we do that are different. So we are gonna go back to an EL family night, which we haven't done in, in a couple of years at Highland, and then just other opportunities to bring in families for smaller events, so looking more at kind of the Donuts for Dads or Muffins for Moms type, where we're just bringing in a smaller number of families and not going for such a large event. Go ahead and just, okay. So getting down to the goals for Highland, we really want to maintain that strong growth for MAP, so that again is our second graders, as well as our LEAP students, making sure that they're hitting their growth targets. So we're looking for at least 70% in literacy, as well as in the MCA reading test, we, we hope to be about 50% this year. Looking at where, so we do this every year, predicting last year's third graders moving up and fourth graders moving up, as well as a, kind of a baseline of where our third graders are at. We think it's very likely will be about 50% proficiency next school year in reading. In math, we had a pretty significant dip in our second grade and LEAP math growth, so we're hoping to get back up to about where we were, we were at 70% the year before, so we hope to get at least back up to the 60%. And then for, again, for the MCA in math, we hope to be at, at least 50% proficiency. And science, if we can maintain our strong performance, we'd like to be at at least 50% there as well. And our SMART goal for behavior, every year, we really look at trying to reduce our number of students who are sent to Time to Think. So again, that's really targeting the students who go there often, and put intervention in place, so they're more successful in classroom, in the classroom staying there, as well as we do, we do track our incident levels for Black students, and hope that it's at an equitable level compared to the other student groups that we have. And I, I left the score from the year before, the percentage from the year before, because it's pretty significant when you're able to drop down 13%. So the percentage of referrals for African-American students in 2016, so the 2015, 2016 school year was 64% of our referrals, compared to last school year was 51%. So, again, trending in the right direction, I would attribute a lot of that to the work of my dean and social worker, and really working with the students, getting strong plans in place, and hoping to produce overall referrals that the students have. Just a few pictures of lunch, and our family night, and just a student who really wanted her picture taken in the hallway when I was out taking pictures. Questions?
Anybody have questions? I do, when is Turkey Bingo?
Pardon me?
When is Turkey Bingo?
Turkey Bingo is November 3rd, I was, I was just gonna say that. First Friday in November.
Okay, I saw that, I just wanted to give you a chance...
It's one of the largest events that we have, we usually sell 400 to 500 bingo cards.
What time does that start?
5:30 PM.
I have it down for 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock. I think the first game of bingo is 5:30.
You just want to get there early to get a good seat.
How to get cards?
And we have food, we do sell pizza and other treats, so it's an evening where you can come hungry and have a semi-decent dinner.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up would be policy first readings, as follows. 601, which is district curriculum instructional goals, 612.1, which is development of parental involvement policies for Title I program, 613, which is the graduation requirements, 616, which is system accountability, 618, assessment of student achievement, 619, staff development for standards. These policies will appear on a future agenda for approval. Move on to our, unless anybody got any questions about those, we know. Okay, move on to our action items. The first one is the assurance of compliance with the state and federal law prohibiting discrimination.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, it's good to be back. Tonight, Director Stenveck and I are here, this is an annual item we come forward with for approval, and it is Minnesota statute requires the school board to submit to the Commissioner of Education, just stating that we are in compliance with state and federal laws prohibiting discrimination. We are doing everything we're supposed to do, so you can rest assured that everything's being taken care of, so once you approve it, then the superintendent will sign it and we'll send it into MDE.
Motion, move that forward, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Nanny. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You. Next up would be the Superintendent's 2017, 2018 goals.
Chair Larkin and members, we had an extensive work-study on this, so really, the governance question tonight is moving approval of the goals, they were in three areas, finance operations, HR organizational study was the first one, administrative leadership development was the second one, and the third one is K-12 activities, procedure, procedures and manuals held up against policy to see if we're in compliance, and if we could streamline for efficiencies.
Start with the motion, move that forward.
So...
I'll give it to Hall. Looking for a second?
Second.
Nanny, thank you. Questions or discussion?
They sound exciting, I'm glad to get an opportunity to work on some things outside of the daily grind, so...
Thank you, I'm looking forward to them too, and so is the team.
Hearing nothing further, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Anyone have anything for board topics?
Go Heights.
All right.
It's a football game.
Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:09. Thanks, everybody.